All cheers.
Okay. All right, welcome, everybody. My name is Rob Shaw. I'm the acting chair of the City of Nashville Zoning Board of Adjustment. And this is the May 23, 2023 zoning board meeting. I'm going to go through some intro information, and then we'll get started into the actual business of the zoning board. So this evening's meeting is going to be conducted in a hybrid format. The meeting is accessible in person in the third floor auditorium of City Hall, 220 Main Street, and via Zoom at the link posted in all public meeting agendas. Attendance via telephone is available using the Zoom connection details. And minutes of tonight's meeting, as well as audio and video recordings, will be available later at nashawnh.gov/AgendaCenter/SelectZoningBoardOfAdjustment. If anybody has problems accessing the meeting, please call 603-589-3056, and they will help you connect. In the event that the public is unable to access the meeting via the methods mentioned above, the meeting will be adjourned and rescheduled. The chair is in control of the proceedings and calls upon all who wish to speak in order as their raised hands are observed. That'll be both here in person, as well as on Zoom. The board follows meeting protocol procedures that we identify in our bylaws. The applicant will have up to 15 minutes to present their case, followed by questions by the board. And then next persons that are wishing to speak in favor, or ultimately with questions or opposition, will be asked to speak for up to five minutes. If there are any questions or opposition, then the applicant has five minutes to present their response. And then finally, only one person of any of those that were part of the opposition will be permitted to speak again, and we'll cover that if that arises tonight. And then, and that's all before the board deliberates and then determines an outcome. We do use a timer for managing that speaking time. And Kate Poirier, our zoning board coordinator, will notify us when one minute is remaining, and again, when the speaker's time is expired. If you are participating by Zoom and wish to speak when the public input is requested, please use the raise hand option, which can be found under reactions on a computer or the more menu on a phone. The chair will call you in turn. Please use the lower hand option when you have completed your question or comment. Also, please mute your microphone until called on to speak. And also just note, in this auditorium, the sound actually carries really well from the audience, so please refrain from any conversations in the audience. And if you need to talk about anything, please step outside into the hallway. And note that all votes will be taken during the meeting by roll call. Tonight, we'll hear requests for deviation from the Nashville zoning code in the form of applications for special exceptions and/or variances. A special exception is a request that seeks permission to do something that the zoning ordinance permits only under special circumstances. To grant a special exception, there are five points of law that are required to be met, and these are outlined in the application and will be summarized in the board motions. A variance is a request that seeks permission to do something that the ordinance does not normally permit. Variances also have five points of law to be met, and they're different from those for special exceptions. Per the City of Nashville bylaws and the State of New Hampshire vice statutes, a minimum of three or more affirmative votes are required to approve any application. In addition, this board will hear all scheduled cases if a quorum of three voting board members is present at this meeting, which does not look like we'll have any issue with tonight. Ultimately, any citizen has the right to contest the decision that this board makes. Should we render a decision that you believe is in error, you have the right to request a rehearing. A written rehearing request must be received by the City of Nashville Planning Department within 30 calendar days from the date of decision. Should this board not grant a rehearing request, you can still file an appeal directly then to the New Hampshire Superior Court. Please contact Mr. Falk of the Planning Department for more information. For this meeting, we have the following full board members in attendance. Myself as vice chair, acting as chair, Mr. J.P. Boucher, our clerk, Mr. Jack Carrier, and Mr. Steve Lionel, our other full board members. We also have the following alternate members in attendance, Mr. Jay Minkara, Ms. Estafia Boras on Zoom, and Mr. Josh Neely, Neely, sorry, in attendance with us tonight. In addition to the board members, we also have Mr. Sam Doofy Turfy, the planning manager, and Ms. Kate Poirier, our zoning coordinator. And we'll start the meeting first by taking a roll call attendance. And... Yeah. Yeah, I'll do that. So, let's see. Mr. J.P. Boucher?
Present.
Mr. Jack Carrier?
Present.
Mr. Steve Lionel?
Present.
Mr. Jay Minkara?
Present.
Mr. Josh Neely?
Present.
And Ms. Estafia Boras?
Present.
All right. And myself, Rob Shaw, the vice chair, acting as chair tonight. I'll note that we, normally what we do is we have all members, regardless of whether they're voting on the case or not, participate in questions, discussion, and however, when it comes to the actual vote, to act upon what's in front of us. Only normally, the full-time members vote on that, and when there isn't a full representation of the full-time members, which we have tonight, then we will actually have the alternate members participate. So we'll go through sequentially, and we'll have Mr. Minkara first, Mr. Neely second, and Ms. Boras third, as far as participation for, as we go through the cases. And that'll cycle through. And again, but they will all participate throughout the process. Are there any changes to the agenda?
No, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. All right. I think unless there's any other things that I forgot, we'll go ahead and move forward with case number one. And, just make sure I got the right... Okay. So case number one, we have Dale A. and George H. Fenton, owners at 15 Cliff Road, Sheet B, Lot 1820. The request is for a special exception from Land Use Code Section 190-16, Section E3A, for a minor encroachment to encroach a maximum of two feet six inches into the 10-foot required left-side yard setback to construct and attach 16-foot by 31-foot six-inch one-car garage, and this is in the R9 zone. Is there somebody here to present the case? And I'll note this for yourself, as well as anybody that comes up to the podium, please make sure you state your name and address for the record. It's part of what we need to have, so if you could do that, and then we'll go ahead.
Good evening. My name is George Fenton. I live at 15 Cliff Road, lived in that property for, since 1980. What would like to do is finally add a garage to the, to the house, a single-car garage. As you said, I think it's like 31 by 20 approximately. The house is like a loop road right off of Harris. So the front, the front corner of the house, we've got 11 feet from the corner of the new structure to the property line, but in the back corner, we need two and a half feet. That's basically, that is the exception that we're asking for right there. The majority of the houses on the street have a garage. It's not going to be out of the, you know, the construction or the properties on Cliff Road. We, as we're getting up here in years, we just would like to have car garage, a garage, so that we can have one car at least covered for the winter time. On the back of the garage, they also would like to put in a laundry room to help us from going up and down the stairs in the basement. So that's basically what we're asking for. Do you have any questions for me?
Mr. Carrier?
I just wanted to reiterate more on what you said. It's like, your property is a little skinnier in the back than in the front, which is...
Yes, yeah.
And given the way the house is situated, because the cliff is kind of curvy there...
Right.
I just wanted to...
And I'm on the, we're on the inside.
Yeah, so, you know, those conditions end up if, you know, which is why your proposal is to cut into the side yard setback, but on the back of the garage, not, not in the front of it.
Right.
And then I noticed, it looks like you kind of angle park there to the left right now. Would your intent is probably still be doing that with the garage, or would the garage be kind of be one parking space?
The garage would be one parking space, and then that space where we slant would be like just parking for the other car.
Okay. I just wanted to clarify that. That's the only question I have.
Mr. Neely?
On the, the left side of your house currently, it looks like there is a chain-link fence and some, some larger bushes. Are they still staying there after this project is done?
The chain-link fence is actually the neighbors. That's not my fence. So, you'll have to ask him if that's staying there. But the shrubs, I would, I would like to keep there, yeah.
Thank you.
Yes, as well.
I think that's it for questions from the board, so you can have a seat, and we'll see if anybody else wants to speak.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Is there anybody in the audience who would like to speak in favor of the application? Is there anybody on Zoom who would like to speak in favor of the application? Seeing none, is there anybody in the audience who has questions, concerns, or opposition? And seeing none, is there anybody on Zoom likewise that has questions, concerns, or opposition? Okay, it looks like none, so I think we can close out the public hearing, and we'll open the public meeting. I guess we'll do the usual kind of go around. Mr. Boucher, your thoughts?
I'm in support of the application. Again, I think that, again, with the, with the somewhat odd shape of the property, not, it's not highly exaggerated, but again, we see where the original house is situated. And I think it's reasonable for the one-car garage, the size he's looking for, that the applicant. And again, because of the property line, it's just a rear, left rear corner of the house. So again, I think it fits into the neighborhood. I don't think that it's going to detract from anything, and I find that, you know, it meets all the criteria.
Thank you. Mr. Carrier?
In summary, I also find support for the reasons Mr. Boucher said. I just also wanted to throw out that, you know, I was concerned if there might be concern on behalf of the abutter on that left side, which to me, looks like the Harris Avenue property. But also, you know, you, it might be less of an impact with the garage, because, you know, one car would typically be there versus kind of angle parking, maybe headlights coming over, what might be a pool or something like that. So, you know, I was thinking, well, what if I was the abutter? I could, might be either way on that. I didn't really have a decision, but we haven't heard any objection tonight. And I think, I also appreciate the detailed design we have in our packet versus just the length and width, where sometimes things go up and there's surprises. This package is very complete with the architectural plans, and I think it's, it will be a tasteful addition to the house. So I'm in support of it.
Mr. Lionel?
I'm in support. I don't have anything to add to what my colleagues have said.
All right, thank you. Mr. Minkara?
Yeah, I support it as well. It's permitted use, it's consistent with the character of the area, seems to meet all the criteria.
All right, thank you. Mr. Neely?
I'm also in support of this application for the reasons as stated by my colleagues.
Thank you. Ms. Boras?
I'm also in support of the application for all the reasons already stated by my colleagues.
And myself, I likewise am. The only thing I don't think you guys touched on exactly, but I think you were kind of getting close to, the house does look like it just slightly like turned a few degrees versus those, the property lines. So, so besides like the actual, some of the shape part of things, it's also the house, the, the sides of the house aren't exactly parallel, and especially to that left edge. And it is, again, a very minimal encroachment, so I think it's quite a reasonable request. Would anybody like to offer up a motion?
Mr. Lionel, thank you.
I'd like to make a motion for a special exception. Dale A. and George H. Fenton, owners, 15 Cliff Road, Sheet B, Lot 1820, requesting special exception from Land Use Code Section 190-16E3A for a minor encroachment to encroach a maximum of two feet six inches into the 10-foot required left-side yard setback to construct and attach 16-foot by 31-foot six-inch one-car garage. This is in the R9 zone, Ward 9. The board finds that this is listed in the table of uses. We have no testimony that it will create undue traffic congestion or unduly impair pedestrian safety. We do, the board finds that it will not overload public water drainage sewer or other municipal systems. All special regulations are fulfilled, and it will, the board believes it will not impair the integrity or be out of character with the neighborhood, or be detrimental to the health, morals, or welfare of residents. Therefore, I make a motion to approve this special exception.
Mr. Carrier, thank you for your second. Any other discussion on the motion? All right. Mr. Carrier, how do you vote?
Mr. Carrier votes in favor.
Mr. Minkara, how do you vote?
Mr. Minkara votes in favor.
Mr. Boucher?
Mr. Boucher votes in favor.
Mr. Lionel?
Mr. Lionel votes in favor.
And Mr. Shaw votes in favor. That's unanimous. It passes five, nothing, and it has been approved. Like noted in the introductory comments, there is a 30-day window of appeal, that somebody could request a rehearing request, but you are welcome to go ahead and start to pull permits and proceed with your application. But if you have any questions, please contact the planning department.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome. All right.
Thank you.
Moving on to case number two. This is also a special exception case. Shirley A. Dutton, 2015 revocable trust owner, Catherine Dutton applicant, at 14 Benson Avenue, Sheet 10, Lot 44. The request is for a special exception from Land Use Code Section 190-47, Section B, for a major home occupation to operate a life coach slash herbalist business. This is in the RB zone. Is there somebody here to present this case? Welcome, and again, if you could state your name and address for the record.
Catherine Dutton, 14 Benson Ave.
Feel free to move that mic up.
That's all, it's fine. Well done. Did you guys hear me?
Yes.
Okay. So I just want to start a, a small, part-time business, life coaching and herbalism. The life coaching will be done mostly by video, and the herbalism, I do want to teach a couple of classes a month on Thursday, probably Thursday evenings, and that's a maximum of seven people coming to my homes, that's all I have space for the class for. And that's really all the businesses. Do you guys have any questions?
Mr. Carrier?
I'm just curious, if, you know, there were seven folks and seven cars, you know, I've gone down all street countless times, but haven't gone by your house until I went and did a sidewalk a few days ago. It doesn't look like it's very busy there. Would there be parking availability, or what's...
Yeah. Well, there is parking on the street, and like on weekends, people have parties, so people do park on the street, and there's never issues with the neighbors that I know of. And I also have a large driveway that, which will fit at least four cars.
Okay.
Like one, two, three, four, in front of the garage.
Is your driveway right adjacent to your house, like to the left of it, or...
It's on the right.
It's on the right, okay. All right. All set, thanks.
Any other questions from the board? All right, seeing none, I guess you can have a seat, and we'll see if there's any other testimony. Is there anybody in the audience that would like to speak in favor of this application? Is there anybody on Zoom who would like to speak in favor of this application? Seeing none, is there anybody in the audience with questions, concerns, or opposition? I see none, and is there anybody on Zoom with questions, concerns, or opposition? All right, I think we're all set there, and we did, did we have correspondence on this case?
No.
No, okay. So, so I think we'll close the public hearing and open the public meeting. Let's see. Mr. Carrier?
I'm in support of the application. I had a little bit of pause with the perhaps seven clients at a time. In looking at the site, like I said, never been over there, it looked like there was reasonable parking on the street, but I was there at an off time, and I just didn't know if that would be an issue, but the testimony tonight sounds like that won't be an issue. And at times, there's lots of other people parking in that area. And I didn't realize that the applicant has a four-car driveway, I must have missed that. So I, I mean, in summary, I think it's a low-impact business, and I don't, I think it meets the criteria, that's where I'm at. Just to hear other opinions.
All right, thank you. Mr. Neely?
I'm also in favor of this application. You know, this is, with, with the potential seven customers all being inside the house, you know, you could have a maximum of three cars on, on the street. I think there's more than enough street parking there. Quite honestly, I don't even think the neighbor's going to know when she's hosting, because it's going to be such a low, low impact, and the majority of the business really is going to be online. It's not going to bring down any property values. I mean, all the criteria that we look at are all, all met by this exception, so I am in favor of this application.
All right, thank you. Mr. Minkara?
I also support the application. I think parking was my only concern when I went by the side. I saw, you know, maximum four spaces, but there's on-street parking, and we didn't hear any concerns from any of the neighbors related to parking, so I support the application. Otherwise, it meets all the criteria.
All right, thank you. Ms. Boras?
I also support the application.
Thank you. Mr. Lionel?
Yeah, I support the application. Again, like my colleagues, I was a bit concerned with the parking, but the testimony is that there should be sufficient parking, and it is a low-impact one night a week, so it should not be a problem. So I support it.
Thank you. Mr. Boucher?
I also support the application, and we also have the major home occupation affidavit with the 10 criteria. It's been annulled by the, by the applicant, so I'm comfortable with the application. Support it.
Thank you for mentioning that.
And I'm likewise in support. I mean, one of the things I was thinking about, you know, being that this is just a couple of times a month type of thing, to me, the level of activity would very much be similar to if somebody was just having a social gathering with friends. So to me, it didn't seem like the kind of thing that you, might be different if it was every day, you know, of the, of each week or things like that, but this level seems like it's very consistent with something that might just be equivalent to a social gathering. So it, I feel very comfortable with this application. Would somebody like to make a motion? Mr. Carrier, thank you.
Sure, I'd like to make a motion on behalf of Shirley Dutton. 2015 revocable trust is the owner, and Catherine Dutton is the applicant. The address, again, is 14 Benson Avenue, and the request is a special exception from Land Use Code 190-47B for a major home occupation to operate a life coach herbalist business, and this is Ward 7, the RB zone. This use is listed in the table of uses, 190-15, Table 15-1. The board, I think unanimously considered that this would not create undue traffic congestion or unduly impair pedestrian safety. I think the board finds there's reasonable parking if the business maxes out at seven folks at one time, one night a week. I think the board finds it will not overload public water drainage or sewer or other municipal systems. The special regulations aren't, there are no special regulations for this particular case. And the board finds it will not impair the integrity or be out of character with the neighborhood, or be detrimental to the health, morals, or welfare of the residents. So again, I think it meets the five criteria of a special exception, and again, I make a motion to approve as presented.
Is there a second?
Oh, second.
Thank you, Mr. Lionel. Any other discussion? Okay. And again, reminder, Mr. Neely is voting on this case. Mr. Lionel, how do you vote?
Mr. Lionel votes in favor.
Mr. Neely?
Mr. Neely votes in favor.
Mr. Carrier?
Mr. Carrier votes in favor.
Mr. Boucher?
Mr. Boucher votes in favor.
And Mr. Shaw votes in favor, and that passes unanimously, five, nothing. So as noted, and I'll probably keep making this note, there is a chance that somebody could appeal this, but you can go ahead and make plans to proceed with, with this approval. So good luck with your effort.
Thank you.
Takes care of case number two. Our third case of the evening is a use variance. It's Milky V. Caraballo Cuevas owner at 82-82 and 1/2 Lock Street, Sheet 45, Lot 258, requesting a use variance from Land Use Code Section 190-15, Table 15-1, Number 35, to operate a barber shop in a portion of an existing building. This was approved by the zoning board on 6/13/2017, but the barber shop never opened up. It is in the RC zone. Is there someone here to present the case?
Yes, good evening.
Okay, welcome.
Can you hear me?
Yes, please say your name and address for the record.
Yes, my name is Milky Caraballo. My address is 82 and 1/2 Lock Street, and I would like to be granted what was once approved for my, for the business, for the barber shop. We have parking in the back and on the side of the building, and I believe it's not going to interfere with the peace of the neighborhood and the characteristics. So please, if you have anything, any concerns, please tell me. Thank you very much.
Mr. Neely?
In regards to parking, when I did a drive-by of the property, it didn't look like there was a whole lot of parking available around the building. Where exactly is the parking that you're, you're speaking of? Because I certainly didn't see anything besides what a resident would use.
Yes, there's parking in the back of the building, which fits like about, in the back and the side, it would fit like about six vehicles. So it's like on the corner, so when you go on Chandler, sorry, Lock Street, right there, you take a left, and there's a driveway, okay? And then also in the rear, there's a space for parking to, in the back of the building.
So the, that, that looks like that's enough parking, maybe to handle the number of folks you're going to have working there? Because I noticed on the application, I think you had six booths, for lack of a better word, inside there. Where are the customers going to park? And the reason I ask for that is, I believe there's no parking as you head south on Lock Street, which means you're only available north of Lock Street unless you park on Chandler. And I know the board has had discussions in the past about the amount of traffic on Chandler already, so where are your customers going to park?
Well, it's not six barbers at a time. It's six, but it's like some barbers work at a certain hours of the day, and then the other barbers work at other, other, other hours. So it's by appointment, so when the barbers come in, they're going to park, and then behind, the clients are going to park behind, where the barbers are going to park, so it's not going to be an inconvenience. That's the plan I have, to not obstruct any, any people from parking outside from the neighborhood, you know?
Any other questions from the board? Seeing none. I think we're, we're good with your testimony. Thank you. I'll see if there's anybody else that has questions from the audience. Is there anybody present in the room who has, who would like to speak in favor of this application? Is there anybody on Zoom who would like to speak in favor of this application? Okay, we have none, it appears. Is there anybody in the room who has questions, concerns, or opposition to this application? Seeing none. Is there anybody on Zoom with questions, concerns, or opposition? Okay, it appears we have no.
I think we had a letter.
We have two letters.
Oh, yeah, thank you. Thank you. Think I might only have the one in front of me.
I think it's just one for this application.
No.
Did we get the one, other one electronically?
No, it's for both. Oh, no, no, you're right. It's just, it is.
We do, this player says we have two.
They should be in your papers.
That came with us tonight because there's.
Yes. One of them is from Vicky Batzorianis and one is from Priscilla Moran.
Okay, I thought that, that one was regarding the next case.
Yeah, the resident on Ash Street is the second, is the next case.
Yeah. I mean, it doesn't actually say specifically on here, but I assumed that that was, yeah, okay. So we do have a letter from Priscilla Moran at eighty-five Chandler Street. I'll just try to read, read this into the record. Gentlemen, received your notice. Yes, yes, I approve wholeheartedly. This business should continue at eighty-two and a half Lock Street. His facility is very well-kept. Furthermore, this location has had businesses at this eighty-two lock for at least since nineteen forty, for a total of eighty-three years. I have personally witnessed all the transitions. I can assure you, I purely, I surely prefer a barber shop and a nightclub. Also, I also can attest, Milky is a great person and great personal, great person and pleasant person. And that was the letter in support. All right. So that closes the public hearing and I'll open the public meeting. Thoughts, Mr. Lionel?
I'm in support of this application. You know, the, the board had granted it in twenty seventeen. I don't see any opposition to it. We do have a letter of support. It does appear to be a low-impact business. This location has had businesses in the past. Therefore, I support it.
Mr. Boucher.
I also support the application. I remember personally using the TV repair shop years and years ago. And I did recognize that parking is a little blind. You have to really look for it. But I, I know there's parking in back because I, I used it years and years ago. So I know it's there, but I don't think, for me, there is concern about parking, especially, I believe that through testimony, I think the owner of the barber shop is going to, I think, inform his clients on what to do as they come. So I'm pretty confident that it won't be an issue. So I'm going to support the application.
Thank you. Mr. McCarr.
I also support the application. I, I think, you know, as noted, a variance was previously granted. I think those conditions still remain true. This has historically been a business. It is true, parking can be challenging in the neighborhood. But again, there's pretty much always been a business here and at the other intersections. Although I don't know, I would also imagine that, that you would get some foot traffic as well. It's a pretty dense urban neighborhood.
Thank you. Mr. Neely.
I'm in favor of this application for the reasons stated by my, my colleagues. You know, there's been a business there for, for quite a few years. This has already gone through the process back in two thousand seventeen and, and the letter of support. So I am in favor of this application.
Thank you. Mr. Courier.
I'm in support of the application. I was actually on the board when it approved this back in twenty seventeen. And I was surprised to see this application because I thought it had been in business. I could have sworn I had seen a sign there occasionally when I would drive by. So I guess the sign was there, but it wasn't open. But at any rate, I think it meets, for the reasons stated by my colleagues, I think it meets the criteria.
All right, thank you. Ms. Boras.
I'm also in support of the application for all the reasons already stated by my colleagues. Thank you.
Thank you. And myself, I'm in support. I don't really have anything else to add to what's already been said. Is there a motion? Again, Ms. Boras will be the voting member from the alternates for this case. Mr. Courier, thank you.
Sure, I'd like to make a motion on behalf of Milky Caraballo at eighty and eighty-two and a half Lock Street. The request is a use variance from land use code section one ninety dash fifteen, table fifteen dash one, use number thirty-five, which is to operate a barber shop in a portion of an existing building. Again, this request was approved by the zoning board June thirteenth, twenty seventeen, but the barber shop never opened up. I believe the variance is needed to enable the applicant's proposed use of the property, given the special conditions of the property. And again, this board has identified that this property has been used as a business or the street-level portion of the property has been used by a business for many years. We have testimony that it's been used as a business over eighty years. And I think the board believes the benefits sought by the applicant cannot be achieved by some other method reasonably feasible for the applicant to pursue. The board finds that this request is within the spirit and intent of the ordinance. The board finds it will not adversely affect property values and surrounding parcels. The board finds it's not contrary to public interest and substantial justice would be served. So again, I make a motion to approve as applied.
Is there a second? Thank you, Mr. Lionel. Any other discussion on the motion? All right. Ms. Boras. How do you vote?
I vote in favor. Ms. Boras votes in favor.
Thank you. Mr. Lionel?
Mr. Lionel votes in favor.
Uh, Mr. Courier?
Mr. Courier votes in favor.
Mr. Boucher?
Mr. Boucher votes in favor.
And Mr. Shaw votes in favor. That passes unanimously. Your use variance has been approved and again, there's a thirty-day window of appeal, but you can proceed with your barber shop and good luck to you, sir.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Have a good night. We'll move on to case number four. It's another, it's a use variance. Rise Above N H L L C owner, Andy Erickson, applicant at forty-nine Kinsley Street, sheet eighty-four, lot forty-three, requesting a variance from land use code section one ninety dash forty-six, section D five, to allow a single-family home to convert to a halfway house within one-quarter mile of a school. This is in the R C zone. I see we've got somebody here to present the case. Again, state your name and address for the record, please.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. For the record, my name is Richard Maynard, a professional engineer with Maynard Park Engineers of Nashua. The project of concern is located at the corner of Kinsley Street and Ash Street. The building is a former community center for the Police Athletic League. It has been empty for several years. The project is located and is, is permitted conditional use in the R C multifamily zone. The proposal is for a halfway house that houses up to fifteen residents for twenty-eight days. With me is Andy Erickson from Rise Above New Hampshire, the organization that runs the program scheduled for this location. He will outline their proposal.
Hello. Andy Erickson, twenty-eight Quincy Street, Nashua, New Hampshire. I can just go through these, read the questions that we had to answer first. The proposed variance will not alter the essential character of the neighborhood, nor will this variance threaten public health, safety, or welfare in any way. It will be a place for the community in dire need for, as such, this variance will not be contrary to public interest. And then on to number two, the proposed halfway home will observe the spirit of the ordinance because it will provide a safe environment for the public to start the process of healing their mental health and allow them a fighting chance to become productive members of society. Number three, this variance would benefit the community immensely because it will be fully-staffed residential facility where the public can go for twenty-eight days to start their journey of further treatment. Currently in Nashua area, there is very little support for the community to start their recovery journey. Due to the aforementioned reason, the benefits of this applica, application are not outweighed by the negligible harm to the public or other individuals. Four, the proposed halfway home will not diminish the values of surrounding properties because it will fit the characteristic of the neighborhood. And then the last one is, the current ordinance of a halfway home must be a minimum of a quarter mile from any correctional facility, orphanage, children's home, similar daycare facility, hotel, motor or tourist court, or any school at any level. Currently, Elm Street Middle School amongst others are within the quarter mile. We ask for this variance because without this twenty-eight, twenty-eight day halfway home, people from the community are not being provided a service that is greatly needed. Also, there'll be a total of eight staff members throughout the whole day. The first shift will be four staff members. The second shift will be two, and then the third shift will be two. So there'll be twenty-four-hour surveillance every day, twenty-eight, whatever, the whole month. Yeah, I mean, well, full sprinklers, full fire safety, every, everything you need. So, any questions?
Mr. McCarr.
I have two questions, one for staff and one maybe for staff. I, I could be wrong. I don't remember this ever being a single-family home. When was the last time it was a single-family home?
That, that's a mistake in the, Richard Maynard, for the record. That's a mistake on the application. It's always been a community center for the Police Athletic League, never been a single-family home.
Thank you. That's what I thought. And a question for staff. Is this use a permitted use but for its location within a quarter mile of a school?
Yes, it is. It's a permitted use by conditional.
It's a conditional use permit. This structure has been a variety of different things throughout the years. Most recently, an illegal boarding house. We told them that the permitted use, if they wanted strict residential, was a single-family home. That might have been why it was in the at. Otherwise, this is going through the process and we'll need to go to the planning board as well.
Thank you.
For the record, we wouldn't be here if there wasn't a school or other facility within a quarter mile. We'd go directly to the planning board.
Thank you.
Mr. Lionel.
The residents that are there, do they, do they go off the, outside the building to work? Do they get their meals there? What kind of foot traffic or vehicle traffic would be attributable to the residents?
There will be no foot traffic. They don't leave. They stay, they basically come, they stay there the full twenty-eight days and then they move off to our other facilities in Nashua.
No, essentially combined.
Can I, can I have Chris come up? He knows more of that information.
Christopher Dina Cola, Two Clock Road, Nashua. I'm the owner of Rise Above and the Process Recovery Center in Nashua, New Hampshire. So essentially, what it's going to be is the transition from, Nashua did a great thing about two and a half years ago, almost three years ago, doing, creating this thing called doorways. And through the doorways, people can go there and they can gain access to treatment. We're a treatment provider in Nashua. We, we have sober living housing as well as outpatient, intensive outpatient, partial hospitalization. We own Seventeen Factory Street and we have full clinical staff, mental health, SUD, doctors on staff. And we work in conjunction with the city, with Drug Corps, with Harbor Homes. We work with the, the state. We were a part of the creation of Revive, which is here in Nashua, the governor's task force. We have board members that sit on N H Corps. So the twenty-eight day program came about, which, which we now require, pretty much based upon the implementation of doorways in Nashua. So what that is, is people walk in and now we're getting an influx of people calling from the doorways that need to, before they get to our level of care that we previously offered, which is partial hospitalization, which is a twenty-eight day. So twenty-eight days, they come in, they're not asked to go to six, six hours worth of group a day. They're actually able to stabilize for twenty-eight days. They, they see their clinicians. The group is less stressed, stressful. They'll be in group about three hours. Meals will be provided. It's, it's that gap in between from, they've gone to detox for seven to ten days. Now they're able to come to us for twenty-eight days. And then they can transition to our partial hospitalization program, which is a full continuum of care. So essentially, there won't be a lot of foot traffic. We'll have, yeah, I mean, other than the staff coming in and, and leaving based off the, the different shifts, but the clients will actually be in the housing for the twenty-eight day.
Okay, any other, Mr. Boucher?
Just a question, maybe totally unrelated, but in the past, I remember having discussions, we've had discussions about where neighbors have been concerned because of the, the residents, the temporary residents would be outside doing whatever, you know, maybe just going outside, having smoke or whatever. And sometimes that has been somewhat disturbing to some neighbors. And I think it's always due to, again, the way the place is managed, what the expectations are. So, you know, I think that this is a very compact neighborhood. So what, just, just so I understand, what is your picture about, I mean, when you say confined to the building, are they literally confined to the inside of the building? Or are they, do they get, they're allowed to go outside? What's the, what's the mode there?
They're not really confined inside the building. They're allowed to come out in the yard from time to time, but they are closely supervised. This is not the first one that these folks have. They're, you know, several in the, in Nashua area and you haven't seen any problems. They do supervise their sites. They make sure they're good with the neighbors and they clean up the, tend to clean up the site and keep close supervision over their site. So, so this is not like they're confined, but they are not allowed to leave the site. Let's put it that way.
Okay. Thank you very much. You got my answer. Thank you.
Any other questions? Ms. Boras, are you all set?
Yes, I'm all set. Thank you.
Okay, all right. Thank you. I think we'll see if there's questions from the audience. Is there anybody in the audience that would like to speak in favor of this application? Seeing none. Is there anybody on Zoom that would like to speak in favor of this application? Seeing none. Is there anybody in the audience that has questions, concerns, or opposition? Please come up to the podium and state your name and address for the record.
Okay, my, my name is Marika Reed and I have the tailor shop right across the street from the building that they want to convert. And this is my sister Vicky. She lives right across the street.
Can you tell us that address, please?
It's eighty-five Ash Street and fifty-one. It's kind of a corner section. So I've had the tailor shop for thirty-seven years and I did have the Police Relief Association building across the street for those, for many of those years, which was great because it had police presence there. Because at the other end of Ash Street, we have a lot of drug dealers going on all the time. So it was really nice to be safe with the Police Relief Association. Then another person bought it and they subdivided it into like four apart, four rooms upstairs. They had one kitchen and they were supposed to be paying five hundred dollars a month. And they had a person on site to watch over these other people. And that guy was charging them six fifty. So he was pocketing one fifty. So he was pocketing $150. So the person that bought it wasn't even around there to even watch. And they would be outside, there was a lot of commotion, police were there all the time. So that got sold to another person, okay? And they had a lot of people in there that were loitering outside. And to be honest with you, there wasn't a lot of parking, there isn't a lot of parking because I have Mark's Furniture Store next door. He parks his truck on one side. There's city permit parking now, so there's like three or four cars on the left right now before anybody even moves in there. So there really isn't a lot of parking. And the other thing is, if they do come in, I mean, if they're, it's a rehab, I don't think they want to be outside on the corner of Ash and Kinsey Street is a great place to hang out. So I'm opposed to it, and hopefully it doesn't go through. Because not only for me, for my safety, I have my customers that come down there and park every day, tons of people going through, and I'm concerned for their safety also.
And I have to say something. I leave.
Can you get a little closer to the microphone? Sorry, just to make sure you get recorded.
I'm the oldest of the group. My father left with my mother and left here with, you know, kind of responsibility. The place is not to be what these people, they're gonna be. It doesn't have the parking, it's gonna be chaos in there. So with all the respect, I'm not gonna vote for this to be there. And I wrote a letter, I was sick, I wouldn't come, but I come in just, you know, to tell you myself, the place is not for this type of business because they're gonna go outside. It doesn't have the room for this particular matter. So that's all I wanted to say.
And if they have four or five people watching them, there's no parking for them either.
The parking will get addressed at the planning board if it goes to that process. So that's, that's really where that'll get dealt with. But let me see if the board has any questions for either of you before you sit down.
Okay, thank you.
Any questions from the board?
I do, actually I do. When, when it was the Police Community Center, I didn't realize it was at, in operation for many years of that. Was that like a daily thing? Did people live there overnight, or was that like kids and police would show up in the day?
No, what happened was the city had that for the.
Can you get, sorry, can you get closer to the mic?
Sorry, okay. The city had that property for the police so they could like stop and go to the bathroom, or if a police officer had to go to court and he lived far away, they had like downstairs, they had couches and TVs, and they could sleep down there overnight or whatever, and they would go to court or in between. So it really worked out well because there was police presence there, and it was fantastic. But then they started getting taxed, and they couldn't afford to pay the taxes on it. It was supposed to be a relief association, so they put money into it every year. So if a police officer got killed or something, then they had the funds to give the widow. But then it was taxed, and they couldn't afford to pay the taxes, so they sold it for $89,000, which was nothing. It was great to have them there, though.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
We feel safe when the police are there.
That's okay. Any other questions?
I think we're all set. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Is there anybody else with questions, concerns, or opposition?
Hi, my name's Ernest Grumblum. I reside at 45 Kinsey, which is directly next door. There is no real outside for the people to go except for on the sidewalk. And I would imagine with four people going to be there during the day, that they would probably want to make some of that parking, maybe, I don't know. But there's not really a lot of parking, there's not a lot of place for anybody to be outdoors. I have my grandchildren over, there are a lot of children in the neighborhood, in the house next to me as well. And it's, I, I, I do have some concern about the fact that they're not going to be confined to the house. I thought that, when he was reading it originally, he said that it was, that they would be confined. But if they're gonna be able to be loitering around, there's, there's very little to keep them from, it's a very small neighborhood, as you mentioned. So there's not really a lot of place for them to, to go out and stretch their legs or whatever. And I, I am concerned about the safety in the neighborhood for that reason.
All right, hang on a second, let's make sure, does anybody on the board have any questions? Okay, all right, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Anybody else in the audience with questions, concerns, or opposition? Seeing no more, is there anybody on Zoom with questions, concerns, or opposition? Okay, Mr. Maynard?
I'm waiting for rebuttal.
Yeah, you can come up for rebuttal. That's, yes.
Some, some of the people talked about parking. There's, there's absolutely no parking associated with this use. They're not allowed, residents aren't allowed to have any cars, and there's, there's no traffic to and from this facility except for the supervisor, one or two people's staff. So previously, the, immediately previous owner was making illegal renovations to the property. The last permitted use was the Police Athletic League Recreation Center there. Any use after that was illegal and not, not permitted. So whatever they were talking about, I don't know, but that they were not a permitted use, they were making illegal renovations to the property. So this is a very low-key project, very much needed in our community, and it's well-supervised. As you know, they have more than one facility now, you haven't heard anything negative about this organization, and they will do a good job for this particular neighborhood. Thank you.
And then those of you that spoke in opposition, you can select between one or the other of you, if you want to come back and say anything, but only, are you okay, sir, if they, okay?
You know, when the first person.
Oh, sorry, can you say your name and address?
Sorry, when the first person bought it, he told me that.
No, sorry, your name and address again.
Oh, Marika Reed.
Thank you.
11 Maywood Drive. When the first person bought that building, he told me that I was gonna have no problem with the parking. I had a problem with the parking. He also said that they had other communities, that there's no problems. And I was talking to Dave Gottesman today, he came into the shop, and he told me that there is problems where they put it, on Temple Street and Pearl Street. He says they're all loitering outside, so he doesn't like that. And I don't particularly would like them being out there either, on, on the corner. That's it.
Thank you.
Any other questions for me?
Anything from the board? All right, thank you. Sir, we're, we're done with testimony.
No rebuttal.
No, no, that, Mr. Maynard had the rebuttal for behalf of the applicant, sorry.
I want to hear one person.
Yeah, yeah.
What is not on Temple or Pearl?
Same, same.
Sorry, sorry, we, we can't, the testimony is closed. Actually, we closed the public hearing now, and we'll open the public meeting with the, with the board only. And again, Mr. McCarron will be voting on this case, and I'll, actually, I'll start with your thoughts, Mr. McCarron.
I, I do appreciate the concerns about parking. Parking is tight in this area. Realistically, though, this is not a residential building, even if it were, there's no use you can put this building to and address parking because there simply isn't room for parking on-site. So I appreciate that any use that you put to, you know, this building to, is gonna have a parking challenge. Sounds as though the parking use is low-impact. I, I do also appreciate the concerns around people hanging around outside because realistically, there is no place for people to, you know, gather, associate outside. That said, you know, this is otherwise a permitted use. The reason why it's here is because of its proximity to, as I understand, Elm Street Junior High, which is gonna close as a school. The use itself is an allowed use and wouldn't be here otherwise. As noted, it would go to the planning board directly as a conditional use where issues around parking and site issues would be addressed. You know, otherwise, I think this is very much a needed use. It appears as though it will be run by people who are familiar and have been doing this for quite some time, so I have no doubt that it would be well-run. But coming back to the property itself, I don't know what use you could put this to that wouldn't have similar challenges. So for those reasons, I support the application.
Thank you. Now, Mr. Lionel.
Yeah, like Mr. McCarron, I don't consider the parking to be an issue. I am concerned about the loitering of the residents that is, that happens on, in any of these, any kind of rooming facility, no matter what kind it is. And there is no yard, really, that, that they can be in. But I don't find that enough of a reason to argue against the variance. As Mr. McCarron said, if it weren't for Elm Street School, which as he says is closing, they would not be here. So I am in support of the application.
Thank you. Now, Mr. Boucher.
I'm also in support of the application, again, for the reasons Mr. McCarron, Mr. Lionel stated. I do agree with the fact that, that there is concern, and I am sensitive to that. But again, if it wasn't for the school, whether or not there was parking or any yard, this is permitted use. So I believe that the applicants, I do recognize applicants have been here before. I know that we've had other applicants that may end up being successful. But again, I do agree with the applicant's stance that, that their, this particular outfit seems to run the operation much better. So I have full confidence in that, and I think the applicants in here have heard the concerns of the neighbors, so I think that they'll be sensitive to that fact. But again, it's based on, again, why we're here, we have a school. And not to say that the school would never turn into some other type of private school, but again, I'm not basing it on the fact that there'll never be a school there. But again, I think that it, it, it's, it's, it fits in, and I don't, you know, again, this is not up against the school. So I'm gonna support the application.
Thank you. Now, Mr. Neely.
I think the applicant probably understands from tonight's testimony, they have an uphill battle to win over the neighbors, and you have a very small opportunity to do so. That being said, I am cognizant of the, of the concerns of the neighbors. Cognizant of the potential loitering, the parking. That being said, this is such a critical need in this, in this city right now. And, you know, the school really is probably at about the quarter-mile mark. I mean, it's gotta be at the outer edge of this, of this perimeter for what, what this is the requirement. So that being said, I'm in favor of this, this application, just because of the criticality of need. You know, the applicant has, has really put forth a good application here as far as how they plan to run the operation, the fact that the folks will be, will be there. I know our concern is the loitering, but quite frankly, that probably not gonna be loitering outside in the middle of the night. But it really comes down to the applicant, how are they gonna run this operation? And for that reason, I am in favor of this, this application.
Thank you. Now, Mr. Carrier.
Yeah, I just wanted to reiterate that this application is here because of the proximity to Elm Street School. And prior to hearing any testimony this evening, my, my feeling was there's not a close connection between this property and Elm Street School. And I didn't think it would be putting, say, any kids at danger, which is really the intent of, of keeping some separation distance there. If it were like a one-street neighborhood where maybe kids were walking by or something, I might have a concern about it, but I don't have that concern in this situation. I, I do feel like Mr. McCarron, that the parking is gonna be a challenge, whatever the use is, and this, I think, would be a bit of a less parking challenge than other uses. The loitering, I, it catches my attention, it's, I, but I, I think, given the need for this facility, and most importantly, I, I think it's gonna be a well-run facility, and I would encourage, you know, the Reeds or Mr. Ernest, I didn't catch your last name, I, I think if, if this is ultimately approved, I would encourage them to have cell phone numbers of the folks that run this because, say, if Ms. Reed were to say, hey, there was some loitering and my customers were turned off by it, or if Mr. Ernst's grandchildren, you know, felt threatened, and, and a call was made to the, to the couple of people running this, I feel immediate action would be taken to correct the situation. So overall, given that, I'm, I'm in support of the application.
Thank you. Ms. Boras.
I would like to be recused.
Okay, thank you. And I am in support also, and I actually, we didn't explore this, but I actually would expect that the clientele would be actually probably under supervision even while outside of the building, based on the structure of this program. So I doubt it would be like some other facilities that don't have a staff presence that, where residents are more free to come and go. I, I would actually expect and hope that that's part of what will be, part of this, and maybe that'll get elaborated on at the planning board, assuming this goes forward. But, yeah, so I think, well, well-stated thoughts on this already from the rest of the board, and I don't really have anything else to add, so. Would somebody like to make a motion? Mr. Carrier, thank you.
I'm gonna make a motion for Rise Above New Hampshire LLC, the owner, and Andy Erickson is the applicant, the address is 49 Kinsey Street, requesting a various variants from Land Use Code Section 190-46, Paragraph D, Paragraph V, to allow a single-family home to convert to a halfway house within one-quarter mile of a school. This is Ward Four in the RC Zone. The variance is needed to enable the applicant's proposed use of the property, which again is a halfway house, given the special conditions of the property. And the board finds special conditions on this property is that it has not operated as a single-family home for quite a while. It's operated, I'm gonna call it, various forms of businesses with living residences there as well. Also, we've had testimony, there's been a lot of illegal residents, illegal units there as well in recent years. I think the board believes that the benefits sought by the applicant, which is this 28-day duration time for folks recovering from substance abuse, cannot be achieved by some other method reasonably feasible for the applicant to pursue. I think the board finds that request is within the spirit and intent of the ordinance. In terms of property values, the board doesn't have testimony one way of surrounding property values of what that would cause, but I think the board believes this would be a well-run facility and would in fact be a step up from the Illegal Act units that have been there recently. So I think with that in mind, the board finds this is not contrary to public interest because it's serving a needed resource in the community for rehab. And I think the board finds that substantial justice would be served. So again, I make a motion to approve as applied.
Thank you. Is there a second? Thanks, Mr. McCarron, thank you. Is there any discussion on the motion? I would just like to add in comment, that it doesn't have to be written in the motion, but just in our discussion, that we did touch on in the previous commentary that this is probably close to that quarter-mile mark from Elm Street School, and knowing also that in a year's time, the school itself will be closing, but even independent of that, that it's still not really part of what seems to be the core part of the neighborhood. The presence of this facility and the school don't really have a lot of connection. So I just, I wanted to kind of just have that noted in our discussion on the motion. So any other discussion? If not, I'll ask for our votes. Mr. Boucher.
Mr. Boucher votes in favor.
Mr. Carrier.
Mr. Carrier votes in favor.
Mr. McCarron.
Mr. McCarron votes in favor.
Mr. Lionel.
Mr. Lionel votes in favor.
And Mr. Shaw votes in favor. That passes unanimously, five-nothing. There is the possibility of a rehearing request, but you can go ahead and proceed with your plans as requested here, and obviously you have to still go to the planning board, so. Likewise, for the concerned residents, there will be another opportunity in the process of, of this structure, so you can weigh in again. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, folks.
All right. That takes care of our regular cases. We do have a little bit of our other business that we need to take care of. We don't have any rehearing requests tonight. We have, I don't think we have the next case, because we're three weeks out.
That's correct. Yeah.
Yeah. So, normally, we have the regional impact review, but the next meeting is three weeks out, so that agenda is not finalized yet. And usually, staff sends that out for us to look at ahead of time anyhow. We do have minutes from the May 9 meeting. Has everybody had a chance to review those? And anybody have any, any corrections to make for the minutes? Okay. And just for completeness, Mr. Neely will be voting on this. Can we have a motion to approve the minutes? Mr. Carrier, thank you.
I make a motion to approve the minutes of, oop, I didn't have the date.
May 9.
May 9, 2023, with no amendments, so a motion to approve as, as presented to us from staff.
Thank you, Mr. Neely. Thank you for the second. Any discussion? Mr. Neely?
Mr. Neely votes in favor.
Mr. Lionel?
I wasn't here, but I will vote in favor, 'cause I didn't see anything.
Thank you. Mr. Boucher?
Mr. Boucher votes in favor.
Mr. Carrier?
Mr. Carrier votes in favor.
And Mr. Shaw votes in favor. That passes unanimously, five-zero. I think that is, is there any other business?
I was just curious on the Forrester information.
Oh, yeah.
If, maybe if Ms. Forrester or Mr. Durfee would have any background on that, I'd be curious to know. If not, I could, sure, we could read it for ourselves.
Sure. So, this is ordinance 2351. That was recently approved and adopted by the Board of Aldermen. This is in regards to municipal signs and their associated approval process. There are really two parts of this. One was amending some language in the sign ordinance, basically stating that signs that are clearly shown on a site plan approved by the planning board are permitted without permit. We don't want to do that. You would have to go through the permitting process for signs, so we just cleaned up that language. The more substantial part of this ordinance is in regards to how municipal government signs receive approvals. So, an example would be the Performing Arts Center. A sign like that did require variances, as you are well aware. The case would then be for signs for municipal government uses. If they needed relief from the zoning standards that govern the sign regulations, they would not have to seek a variance, but rather a special exception, primarily because for a municipal government to, for anyone, but I think even for a municipal government to argue a hardship case for variance from any signed dimensions or something like that, because the government serves a very unique case, it's, it's a very challenging, very appealable interpretation. So, to relieve that burden on the municipality, which is really serving in the public interest, bringing that level, that, that bar down to special exception, I think, was, was meant to, to help the government serve the public without, you know, having the undue burden of justifying hardship for not compliance with the sign regulations.
Was it the Performing Arts sign that drove this change, or?
No, no. It was really nothing in particular. I just used that as an example, because it was highly visible.
'Cause you think it was what? I'm sorry?
It was highly visible, and everyone's familiar with it.
Oh, okay. All right. Yeah. Thanks.
I, I find it a bit, I, I don't consider the Performing Arts Center to be a municipal building. I mean, yes, the city owns the building, but the, the whole operation is being run by a separate company.
You're right. And in that sense, it is a poor example. A better example, I suppose, would be the new DPW building out on West Hall Street. Should that signage require any relief, it would no longer need to seek a variance, but rather a special exception.
The reason I brought that up is because the, when the Performing Arts Center came to us for its signs, there were some of the signs, at least one of the signs was, request was flagrantly against the ordinances, and as, as we keep telling applicants for electronic message center signs, is they need to get the Board of Aldermen to change the ordinances rather than keep coming to us for variances. And I, it wasn't clear to me, especially given your statement, that at least for the Performing Arts Center, that's not included here.
Right. And, and so for private enterprises, for advertising purposes that want to use an EMC, a variance would still be required.
Any other discussion, any other business? Not somebody like to make a motion for us to adjourn? Mr. Carrier, thank you.
7:45.
We are adjourned. 7:45. Yes. Thank you.